All right, good evening and welcome to the 5:30 PM, May 28, 2024, Presentations, City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager. Let me hold. Yeah, let me hold on that. Don't even have it written down this time. City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council.
Thank you.
We are on Special Recognition and Presentations, Item 4A, which is the Employee of the Month for May 2024. We'd like to recognize Record Specialist Catherine Chaney of the Titusville Police Department as the Employee of the Month for May 2024. So Chief, what yours?
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Hello, Chief.
So, very common that we are here to talk about the brave men and women that we have out on the streets doing some amazing things. It is truly a privilege to be able to introduce Catherine, or Kat Chaney, for this recognition because she did amazing things. So first off, Kat comes to us from Public Works, been with the city for just hit your 10-year anniversary, which is really awesome, two weeks ago, and has been with us just about two years. And always just an incredible employee, incredible, always has that perpetual smile and great attitude. But thankfully, she was really, I'm going to say Kat on the spot, not Johnny on the spot, but one of our records employees suffered a pretty serious medical issue at her workstation. And Kat literally jumped right into action, was able to render first aid, get other people in route. It was a very major thing. As a matter of fact, our employee is still out on medical. But it was amazing to see the, how Kat was able to literally with cat-like reflexes jump, jump into action. And, you know, once again, you always see the folks wearing the patch or the badge that seem to get in the positions like that. Just amazing employee. We are blessed to have Kat on our team for that and so many other reasons. So congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you so very much. And here you go. Thank you so much. Real quick, kind of like Chief said. It's, you know, normally we have a uniformed person up here, and gosh, we love those guys, and we're blessed to have them. But sometimes the people behind the scenes, I've been blessed to take the tour of and see all the people, especially at Christmas when people are scaring you when you walk in. But, but it, there's just so many folks like you that you don't see on the street and you don't see out there, you know, in the vehicles. You are, I'm sure they would agree, you're kind of the backbone to what they do every day. And so I certainly thank you. I know they do. And Chief, once again, it's a team thing. And I, I think that's a compliment to all of you all, but to the coach. Well done, Chief. Thank you, guys. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Item B, which is Mission Space Coast Overview. Our presenter Angela Neal's running about 10 minutes late. We just checked in with her. So if we could, we'd like to go ahead and do the Item C first.
Perfect.
And wait for her to come in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And this is the Public Works Overview, and this is the last of the departmental presentations that you'll receive.
Which have all been excellent, and it's been a wonderful idea. Again, I think I said to you recently, every time I see one of these videos, I had no idea that they did that much in that many arenas. That's the thing that always impresses us. I didn't know they did that. So, thank you.
The Public Works Department, led by the Public Works Director Kevin Cook, now consists of 226 employees and 14 divisions. The total budget for the Public Works Department is $100,991,072. The Public Works Department consists of four branches that report to the Public Works Director: the Engineering Branch, the Water Production Branch, the Water Reclamation Branch, and the Operations Branch. The recently combined department continues to allow for better service to our customers, as we now have the ability to cross-train employees and can more easily diagnose and solve customer issues across our 14 divisions. Engineering Branch, led by the City Engineer Ashley Smith. This branch consists of eight full-time employees and manages the Public Works Capital Improvement Projects, covering infrastructure needs related to water production, water reclamation, piping infrastructure, storm sewer, road replacement, and more. The Engineering Branch is currently overseeing 114 projects totaling $57,995,244. Water Production Branch, led by Jean De Mayo. This branch has 23 employees who maintain the city's groundwater production wellfields and treatment systems. Our system can produce up to 4.5 million gallons of drinking water daily, servicing over 22,483 utility accounts. As a result of citizens' concerns, in 2023, the Water Production Branch began sampling for PFOS substances in our water, prior to any requirements by the state to do so. Water Reclamation Branch, Utility Director Andy Janser leads this team of 43 employees organized into three divisions: Water Reclamation, Instrumentation and Control, and Laboratory Services, all of whom are responsible for maintaining the city's wastewater reclamation facilities, which serve more than 19,764 sanitary sewer utility accounts across the city. Titusville has two facilities which treat up to 4.2 million gallons of wastewater daily. This process either sends the water to the Blue Heron Wetland Treatment Facility, or distributes it to over 1,800 reclaimed water system utility accounts throughout the city. Due to the need for rapid results to make important public health decisions, Public Works maintains a Florida Department of Health licensed, nationally accredited analytical laboratory, with staff who specialize in microbiology, wet chemistry, organics, inorganics, and metals testing. Operations Branch, Operations Director Sandy Reller leads this branch in maintaining a wide variety of city-owned infrastructure, vehicles, and facilities. Consisting of 149 employees, this branch is made up of eight divisions: Administration, Streets Maintenance, Field Operations, Solid Waste, Recycling, Facilities Maintenance, Fleet Maintenance, and Storm Water Management. Within the last year, the Operations Branch completed over 3,260 feet of sidewalk repairs, 940 pothole repairs, spent over 1,900 hours trimming trees, mowed over 275 miles of ditches, removed 22,091 tons of residential waste, removed 14,418 tons of commercial waste, removed 900 tons of street sweeping debris, cleaned 2,900 stormwater inlets, cleaned 160 baffle boxes, and completed over 9,257 work orders. Capital Improvement Projects, the Public Works Department oversaw $14 million in capital improvements projects in fiscal year 2023, the largest being the Indian River Force Main Replacement Project. Over 1.4 million was expended on projects with water quality benefits for the Indian River Lagoon, and over 10.2 million was expended to improve the water and sewer infrastructure. Also, in order to comply with the Basin Management Action Plan, 27 water quality projects have already been completed, and seven more are currently in progress. In closing, our team of dedicated employees is always working hard, both in the field and behind the scenes, to make sure the city's operations and utilities are up and running as smoothly and efficiently as possible. From potholes to traffic signals and water quality to recycling, we aim to provide excellent service to all the citizens and businesses in Titusville.
Good job, Kevin, and your entire team. And again, I just couple little ditties here. 226 employees in the 14 divisions, and that just started going down the line, engineering, water, operations. You're got, you obviously have a lot on your plate every day. But I think if you just drive around town, and certainly you see the, the folks working on the sidewalks, see that in my neighborhood today, and you see them working on the potholes. And certainly, it's nice that we also do, you know, repave roads as needed. But you're gonna have potholes. And what, what was that number? Four, 400 and something? There was a lot of potholes. So I appreciate you guys doing what you do. Member Stokoe.
Was that Sandy's voice? I, I was curious of how it was talking about yourself in third person there. No, I appreciate that. One thing I will say is, I've heard nothing but compliments on the new org chart change that we've had. I will say that I feel like a lot of people like to share their thoughts, and that's something that I keep hearing over and over again. So whatever that new org chart is, I feel like it's working. Also, I think City Manager shared this with me earlier. We're actually doing nine miles of repaving, I think, by the end of this year.
This year, we're up a little bit.
Which I think we aim typically for six, so that's good. And to Mayor's point, I, I think you can't drive around without seeing some type of, like, improvement happening in our city. So it's just great to see everything that you guys do. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Member Nelson.
And I love seeing the work on Indian River Avenue, getting everything off the river. I mean, that's wonderful. I am hoping we have a completion, estimated completion date. Do we?
Yeah, we, the contract completion date was August of this year.
Wow.
August of this year. We hope to be done sooner.
Okay.
Progress is going well now, but it's the dry season. We don't know what the rainy weather impact's gonna be on digging up roads, so.
So I think that's a big help to our lagoon.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, well thought out. Member Cole.
Yes, I just want to piggyback on what the mayor said about these videos. They're so well put together. We do drop them into our website, right? Because I think it would be great if everybody could recognize the type of things that you do and your realm of responsibilities. I personally enjoy it. Thank you.
And, and you're informed by it. You know, the numbers alone, sometimes, like, oh, I had no idea it was that much. Vice Mayor. Thank you. Good answer. Anything else from Council? Kevin, you good? All right, City Manager.
Yes, sir. We're just waiting on our presenter. So I don't know if you want to take a recess for 15 minutes or so to allow her to arrive or not?
Uh, no.
Okay.
All right, well, I will just simply recess till she arrives. Thank you. Otherwise, we just stand here with the TV looking at us, right? City Manager.
Ms. Angela Neal is the Director of Special Projects and Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast, and she's here to present an update on the Mission Space Coast and share opportunities for the community to get involved with this initiative. Welcome back, Angela.
Hi. Well, good to see you guys. Apologize for the tardiness. Certainly didn't mean to. But this project was on time. Our branding was right on time, which was good. And thank you guys for being a part of it. So the brand I'm gonna share with you guys today, if you didn't see it at our unveiling of the Unified Brand at the EDC Annual Meeting, we launched this back in January. And the goal for the Unified Brand, if you don't remember, it's to create unification across the 16 municipalities in Brevard County. And so, part of the initial step, as we were gathering feedback and raising awareness throughout the community, we went to all the city councils. And now, today, I get to share the fruits of the labor with you guys, so you can enjoy it and embrace it. And it did come with chocolate bars, which the security officer found in my purse. But also, I came with some pins that, the lapel pins, you guys are welcome to have. So I'll set those by the, the door as well. But I'll go ahead and get started. You can see on the screen what the brand looks like, and I'll tell you a little bit about it. And then also share our brand story, which is the narration over a very short video that I'm gonna play for you guys. All right. So, in building the brand, we spoke to over 3,000 individuals throughout Brevard County and outside of Brevard County as well. We internally, we had focus groups, we had community conversations, we had 40 community conversations throughout Brevard County. And then we also had a survey. And outside of the area, we also had a survey, and then multiple touchpoints where we had surveys to get feedback. And we had two focus groups, one in, or two in North Carolina, and then two in Houston, Texas. And we chose those areas based off of the industries in the area, the weather climates, the cost of living, the types of demographic that we were seeking to attract to the area. And so whenever we chose who the participants would be, it was the working class, the kinds of people that would be potential employees at a lot of our, the employment establishments here. But definitely did a lot of feedback. A lot of areas, they'll do a unified brand for their area, and they don't get the feedback the way that we did in the community, and they're done a lot quicker. But it was very important that we got the feedback from the community, that the community really felt like the brand is theirs, and that they have ownership over it. That way, the utilization and adoption of the brand will go a lot quicker. And so we haven't heard anyone say, I don't know where you got this, or this isn't what we said, because we really listened to every single thing, including all of the footage in the video, the brand story, we have messaging, everything is the colors, everything is what we heard from the community. And then, again, we got touchpoints along the way to make sure that we didn't just think that they confirmed it as well. So, a little bit about the anatomy of the brand. So the tagline is Tomorrow Launches Here. And we have a few different taglines that, this is the primary tagline, but there's some different ones that can be utilized along the way. And so there's Push What's Possible, Pursue What's Next, as well. But Tomorrow Launches Here is our main tagline. And this is, Florida Space Coast is tomorrow's launchpad. No matter which direction humanity heads next, know that its launchpad is Florida's Space Coast. And these are the brand colors. And so the dark color, that's actually like a really dark, almost navy color, that's exosphere ebony. And then there's like a purplish blue that's supposed to be representative of space, but also water. There's green, which represents nature. And then the yellow is the sunrise and sunset, which we consistently heard from the community. But in addition, if you think about the flares from the rockets, that's kind of what that's supposed to be. So here's where you can see those colors represented in the brand, or the logo itself. And we went with the contrail shape. We had at least 30 or 40 different icons that we were, and logos that we were presented with. And we got feedback from the community on those. And then they came back with this one, which was completely different from our original, what they proposed to us. But we felt like it really encapsulated what we're looking to go for. And so the contrail, which is really a signature of this area, because when you think about the news articles and what's happening in this area, and you think about the contrail, you definitely associate that with Florida Space Coast. And so that's where that arch came from. The contrail going up, of course, is the, you can think about the rocket launch, but also the sunrise and sunset. And so that's kind of the colors of that one, and the shape reasoning for that. The one at the bottom on the right, the blue, that one's supposed to represent the ocean and the water and the nature that's in this area, in addition to the space. And so that one's coming inward, and it's on the right-hand side to represent the Atlantic Ocean. And then you have the green, which is supposed to be for nature and the space that's in this area as well. Nature was something that consistently came up when we were speaking with the community, that we wanted to, growth is inevitable, but we wanted to make sure that we grow responsibly and that we attract people that respect nature in the same way and appreciate it the same way that we do. And so that's been part of everything that we have put together with this brand. And you can see an F, S, and C. Looks like a surfboard, looks like a fish. You can probably get pretty creative with it, what you see in that.
Shark.
Shark. And this is the, the brand as a whole. So Florida Space Coast, Tomorrow Launches Here. We didn't want to abandon Florida's, or the Space Coast, that's what this area identifies as. So we really embraced that and just added the tagline and some additional elements to fill that out. And so it has messaging, and it has 30-second elevator pitches, and ways that we, as a community, can speak about the area in a unified way, that way our messaging is consistent when looking outward in and inward out as well.
There's
Oops. So this is the brand story in our video. It's our commercial video. And you can actually have access to this in addition to the logo, the messaging, any of that for your personal use, or we love the city. And I think you guys actually did have it on your sign. So you, you guys got some good points for that. But you're welcome to use this in any way that benefits you. We hope that it brings all the communities together up, and, so I hope you enjoy it.
There's been a line in the sand since the beginning of time, and it's read as follows: Go no further. The spirited men and women of America have been consumed by the singular goal: Cross that line. Today, that spirit continues with the collection of rebels, a new kind of rebel, in the great state of Florida. This piece of paradise, with soft sands and wide skies, is Florida's Space Coast. It's fueled by a collection of innovators, and is home to 72 miles of pristine coastline. The residents of Florida's Space Coast live life at a slower pace, taking in the natural wonder that surrounds them. Breakfasts are spent on the seashore, and the sunrise always has a seat at the table. This unassuming stretch of coastline may seem quiet, but it's home to the loudest stuff on earth, and it's just getting started. Join the community that's Join the community that's driven by discovery, takes the scenic route, chooses community, and defies complacency. No matter which direction humanity takes next, know that our launchpad is Florida's Space Coast. Tomorrow, launches here.
Very nice. Yeah, very nice. That's awesome.
Good. I'm glad you guys enjoy. I love it, and I don't know if I'll ever get tired of it. It's very exciting, and I think it represents who we are as a community.
Yeah, I like it very much. You good? Because I've got questions up here.
Okay. Let's see. Oh, I think that's...
Have a question.
Yep. So if you guys... I'll get the pins. You can online... Oh, this is how you can actually get access, this QR code, how you can access to the toolkit. So you'll get the logo, the brand story, all of the 30-second elevator pitch, all of those things would be there. And yes, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Is this already kicked off, or is this coming, or the commercial and that sort of thing?
It's kicked off. And so what we're doing and what we're focusing on this first year is internal buy-in, and so getting saturation internally with the professional organizations, the municipalities. We want to get buy-in here, that way we can kind of saturate and then work outward, but it's gonna be an international brand for us to be recognized.
That's just well done, well laid out. Go ahead.
So for next year, then you'll roll it out to everybody else and really start pushing?
Yeah. Outside of this area, yes. And right now, we're not saying, telling anyone not to, and so everybody's more than welcome to, but we're limited budget. And so that's the way that we can make the most of it, is to make sure that everybody has internal buy-in, that we have adoption internally, and then leverage that power that with everybody adopting it and identifying with it to work outward.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, well done, obviously. Anybody else? Member Stokoe.
Yep, I was just going to say, thank you. I think we got to see it at the annual meeting, a couple of us that went down there, so it was just nice to see the recap again, and I know a lot of work and time went into it, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Member Cole.
I love the logo. Only problem is I'm not gonna remember what it all means, but I still like it.
Well, you heard it today. You heard it today, so you're technically an insider.
You actually think I'm gonna remember all of it, right?
Just from a shark.
You can email me anytime, or...
Okay.
Anytime.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the time today.
Oh, our honor. Thank you for being here, I know it wasn't easy. All right.
Yeah, I do. I can leave you.
Yeah, exactly. Petitions and requests. Anybody with petition or request? Stan, you look very nice today, you probably need to come up.
Thank you. I'm just looking to have this little slip of paper before I start.
Hey, go ahead.
She's gonna hand to you also a 24 by 36 drawing. She's gonna pass it out, and you can just take a quick look at that.
Okay. Start them up, let's go.
Okay. I think we're ready to start. Are you ready, Mr. Mayor?
I have no chance of reading this little writing.
Pardon?
I have no chance of reading this little writing.
Oh, okay. Well, that's the same thing I've sent to you about six other council meetings, so it's a repeat. But here's what's going on, is that I sent an email, May 22nd, to our City Manager, and the title of it is "SNJ Oaks Continued Construction in Spite of, One, Absence of Property Corners." Number two is "New Northeast Corner Set by Snow." That's actually supposed to be the Northwest corner set by snow.
I learned that.
Failure to recognize encroachments and so forth, and the attachment is field notes by Mr. Diesel and I that shows, for example...
Dylan, could you start the clock?
Oh, so sorry, sir. Thank you.
To recognize the encroachments, especially the overhead electric near the intersection of Mockingbird Lane and Elizabeth Avenue. So how can the city of Titusville approve this? How can the city... I don't understand it. The fact is, I don't know that anybody can understand it, because right now is that when I went to look for survey corners, I couldn't find... I looked for three, the northeast... No, I looked for the northwest, the southwest, and the southeast corners. I couldn't find them there. And I talked to the contractor survey, they didn't find them either. So they set up some wood stakes, and they set them by GPS coordinates. So for example, the people who are on the property boundary points are looking to see the property corners for this project, and they're not there. They just put some wooden stakes there with GPS equipment. This is unbelievable. Unbelievable. I mean, you've got a project that's being approved, and the property corners aren't there, and we got encroachments and so forth. How can possibly the city approve this? And by the way, this is what I guess is being passed around right now. What about this? This big thing right here. Where is it? Who's got it?
It's up on file here in the chamber. I have faced that towards them.
Well, we'll get it.
Okay. Anyhow, this shows, it's even got number 44 of huge errors that are within the project sheet number four. It's just tremendous amount. Number 44, some of them are duplicated any times on the project site, so we got over 100 huge errors in the project, in the site plan. So what the survey is significant. I mean, for example, you've got Mr. Parrish has found that there's a three-foot bust in the right-of-way of Elizabeth Avenue, the width. It's shown is 53 feet on the survey, but it's 50 feet, in which my wife and I granted 20 feet width for the right-of-way to be 50 feet. I'm not getting any answers. And this is not bad. This isn't bad, this is horrible. I cannot believe that any kind of government would allow a project to proceed when you don't have property corners. That's... In other words, for example, one place that says that there's a four-by-four concrete monument, nothing's there. Nothing's there. Other places that shows iron rods, nothing's there. Nobody can find anything. So we did set one corner that we saw.
And you got some extra time, and I'm not gonna keep you long, but I do want to at least say that I learned from you that per our conversation, the engineer who put this together disagrees with you, correct? And there's maybe some litigation going on.
Oh, there's litigation going on.
And so it's not as though there's not some... The person, the engineer who put this together disagrees, and I think there's gonna be some decisions in court that may move forward.
Well, it has got very little to do with...
I don't know anything about that. It's just...
But thank you. Thank you for going to the site. It's him, and our Vice Mayor also went to visit the site with me, so thank you for doing that.
Thanks, Stan.
Good job. Thank you.
All right, next up. Tony.
Hello, Tony Shifalo, Tropic Street. I just wanted to come up and speak about water resources. You know, it's very important, the water, and the city's been doing a lot of things. This is a little booklet from '21, about 20... Says "Water We Drink 2021: Annual Drinking Water Quality Report 2022 Edition." I've kept it. It's a very interesting, very informative little booklet, kind of like the film script we just saw. My point is that the city is doing a lot about the water, and the citizens keep complaining, 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 and the information is out there. How are we gonna... You can drag a horse to the trough, but you can't make him drink. How are we gonna make the citizens wake up? I think Mr. Cook is doing a great job. The solid waste guys are my heroes, especially the yard waste people. They're on top of everything, and they help so much, because even though my husband's a gardener, so we have a lot of use for them. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, and I just wanted to come up and say thanks again, because I think that department is doing a great job under the new leadership, and I think maybe the old leader should be in jail or something.
Thank you.
Okay. Tony, I know that they appreciate you saying that from the podium there. They really do, and I do too. Thank you very much. Anybody else for this? If not, City Manager. Okay, we'll adjourn, and we will get back together at 6:30. Meeting adjourned.